Today's work session, I'd like to call to order the work session with a very simple agenda. Continued discussion on the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. We've set up potentially the opportunity to have a number of these. And today's really about, after initial look see by different board members, all board members, not different ones, all of them, what do we see that we'd like a deeper dive on to give staff ample time to come back and get into the discussion about it. So I'd ask that we stay somewhat procedural as we go board member to board member, let the board member finish. This isn't the time to debate and deliberate, it's to get the things out in the open so staff can come back and talk to us and share with us and provide the data that we want so we can make more informed decisions as we wrap up the budget over the next four to five weeks. Obviously, it goes without saying that we, I'll speak on behalf of the board, we thank the staff for all the hard work. There's a lot of detail in here. There's a lot of detail that was given and it gives us a good starting point to evolve the budget to where we think we need to get it, just one sec, to where we think we need to get it for the community. I'm going to go ahead and just do some kickoff things. And so I think what we have to work on as a board, the proposed budget provides some very ample financial descriptions. It provides less description of vision, strategies, priorities, the focus items that we want to work on. We have, we need, this is as much a strategy document for the community and we have to effectively communicate that to the community. And so I would hope that over the course of the next couple of weeks, we really get into some of those things and actually highlight those things and be very, very specific as to how were the steps this budget takes in helping the community work ahead with specificity in things like infrastructure, our services, our public safety, I'll come back to economic development, our sustainability, and our quality of life. There's some things that, I'll highlight the things that I think the budget called out that I'd like a deeper dive on. I had to dig, I had to do some calculations and go deep, but when you look at our fundamental services of safety and sanitation and enforcement, we're already at roughly 76% of the ad valorem tax rate, just there. We had just the people and the medical benefits, we're over the ad valorem tax rate. So basically, any service we provide is from fees. That's, to me, raises caution in terms of, are we sustainable? States another thing is, is we have to put a focus, my opinion only, on economic development in the budget and how are we going to grow downtown? What are we going to do? What are the things that we can do? What are they? And maybe they're in there and I couldn't see them. I'm not saying they're not. But we really can't address any of the things that we talk about, parks, et cetera, other than on fees because we're already over the ad valorem rate with just the base services and the people. Me personally, I was concerned, not one way or the other, but we put a notion out there, unintentionally perhaps, about public safety. One wants five, only can sustain one. It's not a budget exercise, it's a safety exercise. So I think the board needs to have an examination of that department. And are we doing the things that we need to be doing? Is there an issue? What's going on there? Because I don't view it as a financial thing about resources, it's public safety. That's number one in the community. I think, and I think we have to look at that. I think we have to look at, I would like to look at before we approve the adjustments in salary, what's real, let's do a real, real look see at where are we with staffing? That attrition rate was high and we need to understand that, we need to understand, have we done anything policy wise to bring in the top notch talent? Do we need to do things? And there's a whole bunch of questions in there. I do believe that we need to have an honest discussion of medical and life insurance. It was hard to figure out what the real impact of medical is because they were blended together. But when you look at it, that's now, that line item alone is two and a half pennies on the tax rate and growing. And it's going to continue to grow. And so we have to really look at where we are, perhaps aligned to the fiscal calendar versus the April calendar and some other things. Those were, and then we don't have, we have yet to look at a capital list and it's hard to approve progression on a budget without an idea and a look see as to where we might be going five years from now, two years from now, one year from now, et cetera. And we don't have that list and I think it's upon us to give that direction with the budget, strategy and priority wise. And then, you know, I did see some things in the detail, I'm not going to comment on those now because I think we need to tackle the bigger things first and then see where some of these others land as well. That's just a different budget style. The way, the way I was brought up on budgeting, we'd come in and we'd get immediate 10% cut, go figure it out, not get into the detail from the board. And we're not there yet, but at all, but there are some things in there that jump out at you that we'll probably get into discussion over the week. So those were my real highlights. I will probably spend more time over the weekend because the more I read, the more things balance out. So with that, we'll go right to left. Commissioner Wesley.
Okay. Just some overall opinion I have on something that I'm seeing across the board. Again, I agree with you on doing a salary analysis. I think there may be some positions we are maybe not up to where we need to be, but there may be others that we are. And so I'm, I would rather do a salary analysis to determine where we are for each position rather than just doing a straight across the board salary increase. Some other smaller items that jumped out to me, cell phone usage in each department. Do we need to be paying for cell phones for departments that basically stay in the building all the time? Maybe it should just be allowed for those that are out in the field. So that's an expense we could look at. I also think we should work on a policy regarding travel. I'm seeing some travel expenses that seem a little excessive and I think it would be useful to come up with a policy regarding, you know, how far the meetings are, or how long the meetings are, and to determine whether or not we really should be paying for overnight expenses. Also regarding, you know, we have town cars available and yet we're still paying out mileage. I know sometimes something might be happening where someone can't take a town car and we have to pay mileage, but I think if it's something that there's multiple people going to, we should be riding together, carpooling, or taking a town car if available because I believe paying out mileage is likely to be more expensive. So those are some areas that I think overall we should be looking at policy changes for that. I have some general questions for each department and I don't, I think we're probably just going to go into, as the days go, maybe look at it by department rather than me going in just listing everything that I saw under each department.
So what departments do you want to do a deeper review on, that you have a question about?
Police Department for sure. There are other, even under, even under our own, the Commissioner Department, I don't know what you call that department, but there's even-
Elected official-
Elected official department. There's some things, like I wasn't even aware, we had memberships of certain groups and we need to discuss that maybe, retreat expenses, things like that. I think I had probably a question under every department, but the ones obviously that are, with the police department had probably the most. And I think we, under parks, I want to discuss a little bit about maintenance on that, beautification that was combined between public service and parks. So those were my main ones. The other thing I wanted to look over is if we could have a clear, just an actual list of what revenue we have, I mean, I'm seeing downtown, like there is a possibility of doing a downtown project between two different, between that rental fund and I think under the downtown department, there was a $10,000 project. So some, we just need to make it clear where our revenue is and how much money we actually have to spend on projects. And then I'm thinking that the first regular work session, that some projects need to come forward and we need to be discussing those so that by the time we pass this budget, we have a project ready to vote on, to get started on. I'm also seeing some transportation between the Landeaver money that's there, the, there's this SIP and Powell bill money. I mean, we need to be going ahead, combining, seeing what's that total dollar amount and what projects can we get started on for that? And then, of course, we have the larger $760,000 for the CIP project that we need to go ahead and immediately start discussing. You know, I know last year we had a tax increase and a vehicle fee and those, now we're seeing that money, that where that made money possible for us to spend on a project. And so we immediately need to start going on that so that our residents can see what they're contributing to. That's my overall right now.
So just to kind of summarize, you'd like a department review of Main Street, downtown, for lack of a better way to say it, a department review of Parks and Rec, we've talked about public safety, and then there's innuendos with, across all the boards. And much like what I alluded to upfront, the budget needs to declare, what are we working on? With some specificity as to, here's what we're trying to accomplish for the citizenry of the town, be it roads, be it this, be it that, and not just be a budget that says we have a lot of money.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mayor Brotem.
Okay. I agree with what everyone has said so far. So in just the couple of days that we've had to review this budget, I see it as more of an itemization of what is needed and what has already been spent, but not what is needed in moving forward. We need to be clear about where the money is going, you know, next year or the year after, or five year or 10 year plan. And I'm not seeing that. I'm just seeing some spending that's going on. I don't know if it is all needed in spending with some of the departments, so I have questions about that. But as they've said, I need to have a better clarification of some issues with regard to public safety, with regard to what's going on with Parks and Rec, the planning department and moving ahead, because planning is a big thing in moving now with our UDO that still isn't completed. How are we combining that along with, you know, funding? It's what's needed, road, our infrastructure. I just don't see any of that if you're looking at the overall picture of moving forward with the town and how that is going to be accomplished with this budget. So that's a basic thing with that. The salaries, as far as, you know, we've lost a number of people last year, how are we putting that in? What's happening with those salaries? What's happening with the positions? Or do we need as many people in some positions as, you know, you're looking for, as you had before? I'm not really clear. Or if that money can be allocated to some other things, maybe the police department with additional, you know, officers? So that's a question that I had with that. Projects, you know, there's a lot of spending on projects, on events, on tickets, on rentals. Well, that's an itemization going into one department, but still, you know, I don't know if some of that can be combined, if we need to do all of that spending. And as Commissioner Wesleyk said, we did have the increase with, you know, the tax in the last year. So how is that money going to be allocated? How is that money going to be used? What are we doing with that moving forward? I just think that the budget right now is just giving us a overview and a brief synopsis of the day to day, but not projecting the needs of what the town really needs in moving forward. Do you have any additional departments that you want to do a deeper dive on that haven't been mentioned? That haven't been mentioned? Parks-
Those are an acceptable answer.
Let me see, no, wait a minute. Human Resources, Human Resources, did I say planning?
You added planning.
Yeah, planning and, yeah, so the only other one-
Planning and specifically how are we going to bring closure to things like our Oregon TDO, et cetera.
Right.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes. Broad strokes, I would like a deeper look at some of our public services, like the leaf dump. I'd like to know more about the operating costs and what we're getting out of that. Parking lot rentals, things like that. I would like a deeper look at the communications department, what exactly we're getting for the money. Main Street, I would also like a deeper look at that, at the expenses that are under that heading.
Just point of clarity, Main Street Downtown, kind of, you're okay with that the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Same. I do agree we need to take a look at the healthcare costs and the employee salaries. I also agree that we need to look at all of the capital funds available to us. There will be some obviously that are restricted for transportation projects and some that aren't. But before we can look at individual projects, we really do need a strategic goal in mind, a strategic, not just what one piece can we do next, but what one piece should we do next to get where we want to go. I would like a deeper look at the employee training and travel. I want to know things like, out of all of this training, what's mandatory, what's recommended, and what's nice to have? You know, break it down for me. Is every bit of this required by law, you must have certification training in XYZ this year? Or is some of this optional? We think it's really good learning? And is some of this things that we can let go because we'd like to have it, but it's not really necessary? And the travel that goes associated with that, are any of these available online? Things like that. What else did I have? Grand schemes. I think that's the overarching ones.
You didn't take exception to anything that's been mentioned thus far?
No, I agree with the things the department looks that have been mentioned so far.
Okay. Good?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Commissioner Byrne.
Okay. I agree that we need to take a look and a review at all the departments, not just specific ones, but it hasn't been done before as far as I know. So I would take a look at every, every single department. As far as the police department, I too would like a review, in-depth review on Chief Ice's recommendation of why we need five officers and only one was approved. If we need five officers for the safety of our citizens, then we need to look at all the details concerning that.
We need to understand why.
Right. Medical benefits, I also would like to change that. I know it can't be changed this year as far as doing it in April, to change it to a fiscal year so that it comes along with the budget and look at that in depth as well. The economic development downtown, review there. The salaries also, are we hiring, for the salaries that we're giving, are we hiring the most qualified? I know that you get applications for a job and you go through those and hopefully you're hiring the most qualified, but just look at that, 4% across the board, or zero to four in two categories, we need to look at that. Of course, the CIPs. Also, travel, training, do, can we do training rather than spending the money that we're spending? I have some totals in here in my tabs that I think online training would be a lot cheaper. It would save airline tickets, it would save travel, hotels, the whole nine yards if you can sit and pay a fee to watch pretty much the same thing with a different online training Parking, parking is another thing that I think, this has been a conversation for a long time, the parking downtown. I still would like to recommend that the corner gravel lot be used for parking when it's not being used for events. And we've already said with the consultants that came in, the best use is retail and parking in the back. So that's a recommendation from some experts, that part of it needs to be parking. So I don't understand why there's such a pushback that when we are not using that lot for parking, I mean, for events or for rentals, that it's sitting empty 85, 90% of the time when the parking downtown is ridiculous. So I'm recommending that we do that with the understanding and with communication going out to the citizens that this is temporary. It could be used for the next four or five years until we make that decision or the next board makes that decision, but let's use that space for parking. That's all I have.
And we're going to have to develop a list because I think right now where we all are is we all could come up with our own little list, or big list, but it's hard to put it under strategic priorities at this point because they're lists and that's what we have to get to before we release, we adopt a budget. We have to give a vision and some goals, directions to our citizens so they know we're good stewards of the money. It's not that saying anybody that we're not. Finance Department has done the old man's work to get us to where we are. We just have to communicate what we're doing for them as we go forward. So everybody's had a chance to weigh in in 23 and a half minutes. So with that, I'm sure Greg and Lisa have some questions, so we'll go that way at this point.
I don't have any questions. We're here to respond to any questions that might be posed, so.
So, well, how do you, so we'll just start going Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, come back with department reviews and stuff? Is that it then?
So I guess what we would need to know is what the framework would be, what was the expectation there?
Very candidly? I don't have, I don't have a clue what we're doing. We've got a request for five, got one, we have not, we have no data on what public safety is in the town. Nothing. We don't have specific, any specificity on things that we want to accomplish this year. We have big buckets of money. So we don't have any recommendations at this point. So if I, my temptation, in my previous job, what I would do is I'd come in and say reduce it by 20% because there's nothing in here to produce. I know that's not the right answer. There's a lot of stuff in, that you guys want to accomplish. What I'm struggling with personally is I don't see how it's sustainable right now with where we think we might be in five years. And so we need some form of, speaking for everybody, some form of confidence. So a department review is a department review. Here's our issues, here's our challenges, here's our, here's how we cover it today, here's where we want to take it, here's why we want to take it, here's, here's the must haves. The way I'm used to it is, a department head or an executive, you come in and you, we can't sustain if we drop below this. We don't have that at this point in time that, I mean, that's what we're struggling with. It's not any criticism, it's just that we, we don't have it. We did a year to date, medical's a good example, we did, we did a year to date, we know it's two and a half pennies. Well, that's a policy thing that we're going to have to get our heads wrapped around because it's going to go up another 10% and another 10%. And it's already two and a half pennies, we can't keep raising the tax rate to, without understanding what we're raising it for. We don't understand the attrition rate, we don't know what it takes to our, for our policies to be competitive. We're assuming it's all money. We've never had a discussion with the board, so we need to have those kinds of discussions. I'm not necessarily poo-pooing it. Monroe just went through a three-year analysis, Pineville went through an eight-year analysis, Davidson went through a two-year analysis. So everybody's struggling with it, but we don't have any context for where we are. And every one of those had that discussion as part of their budget process to better, to better understand it. I sat and listened when Wendy talked with the league and she explained the challenges of healthcare. And I learned a lot, both as chair of the risk pool and as mayor of the town, of some of the challenges there that I think we don't all understand what you're facing and trying to balance this. I get that for some, you don't have the right health insurance, you're going to lose people. I mean, that's a competitive tool that you guys have to have, but we don't know what competitive means. We just, we're just seeing the dollar amount. So it's that policy level where we're working together to talk about it and it's not just a financial thing. I, I think, take downtown, what's our game plan for downtown? Both parking, economic development, et cetera. We've gotten a- We've gotten a word, Kurt's done great work, but when you look at it, the budget, what you see in there is you see we, which we really need, something needs to happen with we because they just don't have a business model that, um, we've worked with them or economic development has worked with them in Union County. They're, we're giving them thirty-two hundred dollars and it comes back to us for rental purpose. What, is that our economic development future? I don't, Kurt can tell us, he can tell us about parking. This is what we need. This is what he absolutely needs, uh, to survive. Love for, I didn't ask the question the other night, um, I kind of alluded to it. We've got, we've got five million dollars in transportation funds this year and we haven't spent any. Are we gonna spend some? I know we've talked about a lot of projects, is that rolling over? It's just confusing as to where we are and we need to be able to communicate as one, town, you're getting this, you're getting this, you're getting this, we're doing this. It's not enough to just say, we're good financial steward. But it's with that being good financial steward, we're giving you this. We're meeting these minimum needs and, and these wants. Or because we, we've got things right around the corner that are gonna start costing us as, once the census is done, that we don't have any foundation whatsoever to go back to the community and ask for more, more fees or more, uh, an additional tax rate. Tax rate isn't, it doesn't compete with our surrounding small towns, but it's far less than a Monroe or, or some of those so that have those additional services. So we need to be thinking about where that's gonna go because that's where Waxaw probably is headed. But we have to position the town. So I, I mean, I don't know, you guys weigh in. Structure seems pretty, pretty simplistic, straightforward to me, but maybe I'm missing something.
I weigh in on something that happened, um, Thursday morning or Wednesday afternoon. I was at Walmart and of course, and we're at the grocery stores. We always see people we know or people come up to. And one man came up to me while I was standing in front of the pharmacy and he said, what's going on with the budget? And I said, well, we just got the budget, we're going through, we're gonna have meetings, kind of explain the process that we're going through. He said, well, all we see, and he said, we, as far as, I guess people he knows are in his circle. He said, is spin, 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 spin. And what are you doing for the people in Waxaw? What are you doing for the citizens who are paying the tax? And I said, well, that's what we're looking at. And it, it's hard, it's really hard to explain when, when I'm standing there and I'm looking and I've gone through this budget and I've put this rainbow of tabs here of questions and then have citizens call and come up to you in public where there's other people around talking, which is part of our job. But it's difficult when you can't explain to them. It was embarrassing to me. And, um, finally got away from him. So my big thing is sustainability. Uh, I, I know everything goes up and up and up, but how do we sustain this without continuing to go up on taxes? And I don't want to do that. There's got to be other ways. There's not a whole lot of businesses coming here. We don't know how, we maybe know how many houses may be coming, but to count on just that without going back through here and really being diligent to cut this or really explain why we have to do these things, is disturbing to me to say the least.
And I want to make one thing clear. Just lived through this in, in the, uh, at the league level with, with the trust pool. They didn't keep their focus as readily on the people and, 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 um, it, it is a combination and they're, and they've had to go through a succession planning and, and significant change to how they do things salary-wise, training-wise, service-wise, et cetera. So I don't want anybody to think that this is, this is going one way or the other. It's just I, we need to understand it in the context of the region we're in. And, and that's, that's all I hear everybody asking for. Context for the numbers that have been given to us.
We need, uh, are you speaking? I was gonna say, we need more clarification with this budget, with the departments, with the spending, with the information that's been given. As I said, what is really necessary and what is needed, what is a want? You know, what wish, you know, we would like to have this, we would like to do this. We, we need to be able to explain that and see that with clarity. We need to be able to understand why the salary, why the increase, why, you know, we've lost so many people, why, as they've already alluded to with, um, the police department, they are getting one officer and not five officers if that is a real need for them? And why is that need not being met as opposed to some other, um, wants or needs in other departments? We need to be able to explain to people, um, not just, oh, they asked for a hundred thousand dollars in some department, but what are we gonna do moving forward? Is that a hundred thousand, next year gonna be two hundred thousand, it's gonna be that? Can we sustain that with our budget? The money that we have with the pool of money that's sitting there for capital improvements or STP or the, how is that going to be used? People see potholes, they see streets that need to be fixed, they see work that needs to be done, but they don't see it being done. And then if we're increasing taxes or if we're raising things for them, how come they're not getting the services that they think that they need in the town? That they need in the town, not that they want in the town. So I think what is needed for me would be for the department heads to come forward, you know, um, at our, going forward in our meetings, to explain how they calculated, why these numbers are here, for us to ask questions for more clarification as to if it is actually needed, wanted, or something that can be adjusted. And then when we have the additional funds, where's that money best suited? Where can that money go within the town where it is actually needed? Then when we look at downtown with the economic development, you know, what's happening there? What's gonna happen with the corner lot? What's gonna happen with, you know, um, the Waxaw entrepreneurs? How are we going to calculate all of that moving forward? Where's that money gonna go? What's gonna happen with, it's like a what if? What, what are we going to do? And this, this doesn't give us any information as to that or even a plan for the next five years down the line. Because if we don't have that plan, then we're, we're gonna be in trouble moving forward if we don't have the economic development or the commercial or something, then we're basing everything on taxes and that's going to affect the people that we are now serving. So I just need clarity.
Commissioner Lee?
Uh, I'm far from the first person to say this, but a budget is a moral document. And I look at this and I can't tell what is the moral heart of the town? What is our core value? Is it public safety? We want to be a bastion of safe community? Is it quality of life for our citizens? What is it that is our most important value structure? You can't tell from this. All I can tell from the budget is we've lost a lot of employees and we seem to be running scared of that. And we want to pay more. I can't tell what is our, our overarching goal, our value, what we're looking for to create in this town. And that's gotta be in there.
The goal, the initiative, that, that kind of stuff, yeah. I mean, turn, flip this around to a positive. So as we ended the, as we saw in the audit, we're sitting at forty-two percent of fund balance. This board has the option to take the forty-two down to thirty percent and use some of the, the, um,
One point three in.
To work on projects or whatever. But I wouldn't know what to put it on at this point in time because we don't have the context of what's, what we're going after. We have department budget. I mean, could be that we'd want to spend all that money on, um, a road, a bridge, uh, all the safety improvements at the parks. So, uh, the money that is in the park and rec department is used for other things. I, I make, I'm just trying to go through a list, but contextually, we don't have all of that to make, uh, from, from a department standpoint. Heck, for all we know, we, we, we may be able to cut, but we may be able to, we may be having to look at things a little differently. I'm most nervous. I completely get what you're trying to do Greg and Lisa in terms of the salary side. That attrition rate would make any manager, anybody nervous and we want to help with that. We're not trying to do anything other than help with that. I, I suspect, I'll put it this way. I want to do a look at it so we have a plan for the next five years going forward on this versus this is this year's fixed and what's next year's fixed.
Yeah.
That was the message that I got out of the towns that I looked at yesterday in, in looking at that. So it's time for this board to do the work on, on that and listen so we're not in react mode. Um, so Commissioner Westlick, you, did you have?
No, I'm ready to move forward here.
Okay. So how would you like to start on Tuesday?
I think we need to identify the departments that we want to look at first and we'll have that department head ready to answer any questions. At that point. And, and what I would say is it'll, it'll, I guess it'll be similar to what we've been doing since March when we had the department heads come in and talk about the details that they presented as part of their budgetary requests. So we'll essentially, I suppose, utilize that format so the department heads can come prepared to do that.
Well, let, let's be clear. The police department hasn't been before us. So that will be new and different. We haven't seen numbers in a long time about that and, um, that's why the number five kind of shocked me. I don't think, um, um, so that, that will be new and, and different. Planning puts you in a, you know, enviable position here, um, but, and realize that. But, um, um, we have a resource problem there. We have a very specific community need problem there. And, and, and so it's not presentation as much as discussion. How do we move that forward in the best way possible for the community? From, from an engineering, transportation standpoint, we've been talking about a lot of, hey, we need to move on these. This is how much we would want to spend, not how much we budget, but we want to spend to relieve these congestion or, or these issues. And perhaps, hey, are, are, where are we? One of the, um, one of the things we don't have is a, uh, CIP tracker in terms of how things are progressing. And we get kidded sometimes because we'll ask the question, how's this project coming along? And you guys, you guys always want to ask about where are we? We do because we don't know. We just, we just don't know. I'll say it, I, I'll just say it bluntly and it, and it irritates me. I'm, I'm convinced Kensington will fall apart before we get something done there. We've been talking about that as a community since twenty-fourteen and, and the community doesn't believe us anymore. The Landever, um, uh, discussion about their monies, it's great that it's sitting over there. I got my head handed to me at a ribbon cutting. What did you guys do with that money? They gave that to you seven years ago, six years ago. I get that it worked out great to get the spot safety. Their question is, what are you gonna do with the rest of it now to alleviate congestion? Don't just save it. And, and while this may be too blunt and direct, that's what people are asking us. What are you guys gonna do with the money? We don't care that, we don't care that you have the money. What are you gonna do for and, and give back to the community? I can't say it any other way and, and I don't think any of us feel like we can say anything right now. And, and that's the challenge here. And all that said, you go to what I went to this morning at, at the radio thing. People are very positive about the progress that are being made. We got a great opportunity. This isn't a, a negative, this is an opportunity to get the budget communicating. Not only have we done all this in the past, we're gonna do all this next year. To me, it's a great opportunity. We're just not there yet. We got a great opportunity over the next four or five meetings. Maybe we can get it done in one or two. I don't know. I think some of Dina's will become clearer when we get to the final discussions around the master plan. We haven't finalized that. That's fair. I don't, I'm not as, uh, I don't see personally as much of a need to do a department review around parks and rec right now because we gotta have the capital plan, or not the capital plan, the master plan. We gotta read, that's gonna be the discussion there. So, but police, planning, transportation, I think we've got great stories to tell. So let's, here's, here's the budget and here's what we're gonna do. And here's, here's how we want to, here's what we recommend the capital budget be used for. And guess what? We, if Matt came and said, I want to, I want to pave two million dollars a road, can I use the, uh, the forty-two percent, take it down to thirty percent? Those are fair questions to ask us and be tough on us on. You don't have to do that, Matt. I'm just saying, we don't know the status of these things. And so push us, let's.
So if that, if, if that was the recommendation, we would have made that and we, we didn't make that. What we, what we recommended is that the board has access to a hundred thousand dollars for CIP planning and you have access to another two-hundred-and-fifty that gives some flexibility between the thirty and forty percent fund balance policy. There absolutely is additional funding that's there that could be used for seed money. One thing, just in, in a context, um, from a context standpoint, we did not go into this budget assuming that we were gonna do park projects because we're still in the master plan finalization and approval process. The other part of that is that we didn't jump into recommending a particular road project that would take capacity away from a park project as well. So I think what we are prepared to do in the future budget meetings is come back to you with that CIP list, have that discussion, continue kind of, uh, the deliberations as to how can you deploy money moving forward? Because there is that five-point-eight million dollars worth of capacity that exists. And that's a discussion that we're ready, willing and able to have with the board, but we haven't jumped to a point that would take capacity away from parks or, or direct it to roads. One, one thing just to note, of the five positions that the police requested, there are only four of those were officers. One was a civilian, so it wasn't five police officers. The other thing that is occurring is that our projects are moving forward and we are spending, spending money. So Kensington has progressed. If the board recalls, uh, there was direction to staff to go to the CRTPO to try to find out if there could be federal funds allocated for that, that occurred. We then worked with the, the state DOT to, to get the spending agreement in place. Recall also that the funding source there then changed and, and so there's, there's work being done now that'll have to be documented before those dollars are spent from, from the federal side to move that money forward. So some of, some of those things are in process, but there is a process to it. The other thing I would note is that we are working forward, or we work, are working on the Kensington Turn Lane Project, which is the STP. Matt and his department's working on the Pine Oak intersection to see if we can run to, to the ground. That is a spot safety or not. Our Landever money is there. Our Waxaw Marvin Corridor Study really gives a guide, guidance and guidepost for how that can be deployed. You've approved already the spot safety money on sixteen for that intersection improvement. There's been, uh, an agreement.
Put that stuff in the budget. Put in the budget, here's what we are going to do this year. Right now, we don't have anything. That's the frustration.
So the budget is a look forward on how money will be spent. Those monies have already been agreed to.
I understand. We don't have anything in here on how money's gonna be spent other than people. That's not a way to address a citizenry. A citizenry is, wants to understand what service you're going to provide. The only thing in here is that we are gonna continue to collect garbage. It's, if, we need to be able to articulate, hey, are we going to do the public service? And we're gonna improve our public service capacity. People need to understand what we're going to do. I get that we have a lot of capacity, but we also stepped in it. In my humble opinion, we have a document that question, brings into question whether, where public safety is in the community. And now we have to have that discussion. You can't put out to the citizens, say, chief wants five and we're only gonna give him one. You just created unintentionally a situation that we have to address as a town. People heard that? I got seven calls Wednesday morning. What the hell's going on? Do we have an issue? the hell's going on? Do we have an issue?" I have stayed away from him, 'cause I don't want to challenge him or you on that, but we've created, what do we, what is our public safety issue? And how are we gonna stay, instead of, "Hey, we need five," how are we gonna stay number two? Todd's always number one. We all know that, but Todd's always the top-rated service. How are we gonna keep Todd number one? Do we have everything in there? Don't see it.
I think what we're looking for, you just stated a number of issues, uh, things that are going on, but we as public officials who are out there on a day-to-day don't have that information readily available in front of us to explain to the citizen, to the citizens. The other thing is, is that you stated the hundred thousand dollars that you said was there in the, you know, available as to how, where we wanted to use it, or the two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. But I think what we're looking for more is if that money is available, yes, we can decide how to use it as a board, but what is your recommendation moving forward? How best can that be used? So, we can take that recommendation and combine it with the budget or other needs of the town, so that we can say, "Okay, this is the recommendation coming forward from our town manager, our finance director. Is this how we now want to use that? We need that recommendation to see, because we may not know, we may not have all the information or resources that you do to make that type of decision. So, we need you to put that in the budget or to bring that forward to us, so that we can have that information." That's what we're looking for, that information from you moving forward. Don't just say you have it. What do you want to do with it?
And we might agree with that recommendation. We might disagree with that recommendation, but we need that recommendation. We're relying on your years of experience.
From a clarity standpoint, would you wish us to make a recommendation on a park project before the master plan is adopted? It would be my question.
We, we would like the recommendation maybe on a road project, or the maintenance project, something, something that, you know, to say, "Here, here's something in front of you. Here's something in front of you. How now do you want to move forward?"
And more than, more than one project. We can do more than one project.
It could be a park and a road and a sidewalk.
We come and get a recommendation for one project, say, on a park, when we may be able to do two smaller ones on two different pieces of land. But a lot of the questions that I'm getting, and like it or not, is in 2012, we spent two million dollars on land for park, 2012. That's seven years ago. It's still sitting.
Yeah, or.
I don't know how to answer.
Or, or to be a road, we need roads. We need maintenance. We need a lot of things going forward. How best can we use that? So, if we have all of that in front of us, then we can say, "Okay, maybe it's not that we're gonna use it on the park over here first, but we need the road. We need the maintenance facility. We need," these are things that we need to have in front of us going forward. So, and also, if you ask, you know, what departments would I like to see, you know, first are coming up, I definitely would like to hear from the chief and the police department, definitely from the planning department, engineering or transportation, and also from human resources, understand the needs of the, uh, staffing and salary and medical and everything else that's going forward. So, we just need information, more information than numbers, and we don't have the information.
So, maybe a couple of thoughts. Um, one, to address a question you asked, and it keeps coming up, and, and to me, it's intuitively obvious, uh, whether you voted for it or against it. We had a two and a half cent tax increase last year. That two and a half cents roughly equates to the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we put in reserve every year. A conscious decision by the board to begin to establish a reserve fund. That's a positive story, but for whatever reason, it's not out there. We probably need to do a better job of communicating that. Um, I don't, I think it's great we have projects, but here's the five things that transportation needs to address congestion issues. Here's the, here's the rec, you kind of alluded to it, but then I had started all sorts of questions. We need to get all of our existing parks at a bare minimum service level. And call that, you know, hey, everybody in this town understands that we've been sitting, uh, we've been, how do you say it?
Sitting on hold.
Not, not so much on hold. We bid off more than we can chew back in twenty, when they took on Nesbit Park and, and bid off a lot, lot more than they thought, and went quickly to lights immediately, and now you've been in recovery mode with that. They bid off more than they could chew, we did, with Town Creek Park. And, and basically couldn't get to it until recently. So, where in the budget is, shows the, Dina's moving forward with, uh, programming, and that's part of the partnership with the YMCA and how that, and, you know, we're moving forward. That's a much better storyline than, but we don't know what it is, uh, than, "Hey, we're gonna do events and we're gonna sell tickets and we're gonna do that." People don't understand that. Where's the YMCA field? On one hand, you got the Y saying, they're, they've got a director out here and they're telling everybody, "You guys haven't met yet." I understand that, but where are we with that relationship? We've got the property. Are we gonna start building? Are we waiting? Clarification on that stuff is, is important, because if we're not gonna do anything on the fields for another year, that sends a very strong message to this town that we may not be committed to the Y. I know that's not true, but it starts to send a message, and that's what you hear five people talking about here. Five, um, five people talking about here. We, we don't have message, clarity, information, which, and then again, I, I think it gets to the whole communication side of it. We have to, we have to look at that and see how we get better, but.
I have one thing to say in, in the park area. Uh, the many questions that come to me and things that I hear in emails and calls is, just from the other night, was, you have all these plans you've been talking about. You've got this master park plan that so many people took, participated in, answered questions, came to all of the charrettes and everything else, and then they're looking online and they see this thing that the downtown wants to use or, or an appendix to the master park plan of an amusement park, a train, a music park. They said, "Where in the hell did that come from?" So, that's my question. Where did that come from, out of the blue? I'd like an answer for that. I mean, that was just broadsided, and I'm getting broadsided by, by citizens, saying, "What in the world is the town thinking?" My answer is, "Well, on that one, I don't know."
Well, it's gone.
We sure don't have the money to do that.
I think Dina and consultant heard. Probably already gone, isn't it? Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, so.
But there's still answers. There's still questions that need to be answered on those things. You can't just throw your hands up and say, "Well, it's gone." It, you know, that, that's part of how they look at town, they, how, how they look at this board and the management and, and the people who serve them and that make decisions for them.
And I think, I, I'm gonna put the positive leadership spin on it. I have no doubt the likes of Todd and Marion have relationships out there, and people have the utmost trust and confidence in, in you guys as individuals. I know Pat Kiddo has a lot of trust and confidence in you. I, I know that one probably rubbed you a little bit wrong. I can only imagine. This is about how do we collectively have trust and confidence in the town and show that we're, we're a team. I think very realistically, when I went back through two or three, four budgets, you could see the ebb and the flow when, when it was time to invest in one thing, Parks and Rec dialed it down, but when we built it, it went up like that. And that's part of where do we make the trade-offs? And that's what we're trying to, trying to get to, make sure we have the clear understanding, so we can make the trade-offs. Wendy may come back and say, "Hey, based upon the salary study, we need six percent." Then what do we do? I mean, that's, I, I get that it was a cost, it was an adjustment factor, but we haven't done since 2014 a real study. And, gosh, we've been through what in those five years? Significant amount. And I readily understand that it's probably very, very difficult to get, uh, quality resources in, in this competitive market with such a low employment rate. Um, yet, the flip side is, as you can see, the positive and the investment in the financial department. Um, I was looking back through one of the budgets and, like, wow, big difference, but yeah, big difference in how we're doing it, too, which is great. And that's a, I can argue that one in a positive way with anybody in this town, um, with extreme clarity, and that's a good thing. That, that's the clarity that I think we're leading to. So, do we want to, I'll, I'll make it simple. Do you want to start with public safety on, on Tuesday? And then maybe take some time to decide how, how best to bring the rest forward, and then, um, is everybody okay with that? Greg gave a thumbs up, uh, kind of thing. Um, and then we'll, I would imagine we'll keep, uh, review. You don't get to ask questions.
I just want to know how to prepare for that. Are, are we gonna get questions?
No, you're, 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 you're sharing your department with us, okay? Where, where are you? What are you seeing out there? Here's the must-haves. Yes, at some point in time, we'll need this in the future. Hey, if I, um, we need twenty officers now. No, we need to, we're on a glide path with the growth. This is what it may, I, I don't know what the answer is. Um, it's kind of like, I'll, I'll take it completely out of here. The last thing we want to be in the situation is, is where this ABC bill is going. We're basically 2020, January 2020, starting from scratch. If they don't change some things, it's like, no glide path, no nothing. You just, you know, boom. We don't want to be that way with our services. Um, but, all right, then I will take a motion to recess until Tuesday morning, May... At, May seventh at nine AM.
Some of.
All those in favor?
Aye.